Can I? Do you want to put down over to be able to talk at any point?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you hear us?
Can you hear?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
Excellent.
Everybody else up?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the first of two public hearings for this evening. First one is scheduled for 6:45 and it's a public hearing on the 2020 Community Development Block Grant. This is something that we have been working to with our, with the town engineers to move forward about the possibility of an application for such funding. And as I indicated, this is the first of two public hearings and this one is specifically on the 2020 program here. So I'd like to ask the clerk to read the hearing public notice. Public notice of hearing issues.
Town of Monroe, Seratoga County, New York, public notice. The Town of Monroe will hold a public hearing at February 9th, 2021, at 6:45 p.m. at Town Hall with a purpose appearing public comments on the Town of Monroe's Community Development Act and to discuss the possible submission of one or more Community Development Block Act applications for the 2020 program year. The CDBG program is administered by the New York State Office of Community Review Law and will make funding available to eligible local governments for the 2020 program year for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. The hearing will provide further information about the CDBG program and will allow for citizen participation and the development of any proposed grant applications and/or to provide technical assistance to develop alternate proposals. Comments on the CDBG program or proposed projects will be received at this time. The hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 570.486, Subpart I of the CFR in compliance with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Assistance under the Community Development Block Program must meet one of three national objectives: Benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and life or urgent needs affecting the health and safety of the community. No less than seventy percent of grant funds must be used for activities benefiting low and moderate income persons and the benefit area must contain at least fifty-one percent of low and moderate income residents. All interested residents, including minority, women, disabled, and disadvantaged persons, are strongly encouraged to attend this public hearing. Due to public health and safety concerns and in accordance with the government's executive order 202 and all extensions and continuations, the public will not be permitted to attend at remote locations where board members or department head or staff will be situated or in any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing. The video conference is available as follows. HTTPS colon backslash backslash US zero two web dot zoom dot US backslash J backslash three one one seven nine oh five seven five six oh. To dial in, please call 1-929-205-6099 with leading code eight one one seven nine oh five seven five six oh. The link will also be on the town's website at www.townofrode.org. Special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments, or those who need a translation from English. Those individuals should contact the town clerk immediately at Town Hall 351 Reynolds Road or 518-792-1030, at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments may also be submitted to the town clerk immediately at Town Hall 351 Reynolds Road, Monroe, New York, 1-2828 until February 9th, 2021 at 4 p.m., dated January 27th, 2021.
Thank you, Leanne. And just for the record, I'd like to confirm that the actual notice was placed in the post star. We have it on our website and we've also posted it on the doors of Town Hall. Is that correct?
Correct.
Good. All right, with that, I would like to open it up to the public. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're on a smartphone or a computer with a microphone, please click the raise hand button on the control bar of the Zoom window. If you are listening by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. And so the public hearing is now open to the public. Anybody waiting in the queue? Nobody has raised their hand. We have three attendees. And we have our next public hearing scheduled for 6:55, so we'll leave this hearing open until that time. And again, just for the public's benefit, we're in the middle of the first public hearing of the evening and this is in relation to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant program. And if there's any member of the public that would like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're on a smartphone or a computer with a microphone, please click the raise hand button on the control bar of the Zoom window. If you are listening by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. We will accept your comments. Hello? Hey, man. Okay, we'll send somebody. All right, thanks. Our team, the councilor is getting out to court.
Director, sign up.
I didn't say. What story do you have? Okay. So hearing no comment on any members of the public. I'd like to record that we received no written or verbal comments for the public hearing on the 22th Community Development Block Grant. And at this time, if there's no objection, I'd like to close the public hearing on that. Second, on favor? I propose the public hearing is closed. You know? All right, now it is 6:55 and this is the second of the public hearings for the evening. This particular public hearing is on the Community Development Block Grant for the program year 2021. And ask the clerk to read the public's notice for the record.
Town of Monroe, Seratoga County, New York, public notice. The Town of Monroe will hold a public hearing at February 9th, 2021, at 6:55 p.m. at Town Hall with a purpose appearing public comments on the Town of Monroe's Community Development Act and to discuss the possible submission of one or more Community Development Block Grant applications for the 2021 program year. The CDBG program is administered by the New York State Office of Community Review Law and will make funding available to eligible local governments for the 2021 program year for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. The hearing will provide further information about the CDBG program and will allow for citizen participation in the development of any proposed grant applications and/or to provide technical assistance to develop alternate proposals. Comments on the CDBG program or proposed projects will be received at this time. The hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 570.486, Subpart I of the CFR in compliance with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Assistance under the Community Development Block Program must meet one of three national objectives: Benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and life or urgent needs affecting the health and safety of the community. No less than seventy percent of grant funds must be used for activities benefiting low and moderate income persons and the benefit area must contain at least fifty-one percent of low and moderate income residents. All interested residents, including minority, women, disabled, and disadvantaged persons are strongly encouraged to attend this public hearing. Due to public health and safety concerns and in accordance with the government's executive order 202 with all extensions and continuations, the public will not be permitted to attend at remote locations where board members or department head or staff will be situated or in any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing. The video conference is available as follows. HTTPS colon backslash backslash US zero two web dot zoom dot US backslash J backslash eight one one seven nine oh five seven five six oh. To dial in, please call 1-929-205-6099 with leading code eight one one seven nine oh five seven five six oh. The link will also be on the town's website at heavyguy.townofrode.org. Special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments, or those who need a translation from English. Those individuals should contact the town clerk immediately at the Town Hall 351 Reynolds Road or 518-792-1030, at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments may also be submitted to the town clerk immediately at the Town Hall 351 Reynolds Road, Monroe, New York, 1-2828 until February 9th, 2021 at 4 p.m., dated January 27th, 2021.
Thank you, Leanne. And can you confirm for the record that this notice was placed in the post star? It's also presently on the town's website and posted on the doors of Town Hall.
Yes, it was.
And have you received any written comment today?
I have not.
Okay, so I'd like to officially open the public hearing through public comment as we did in the previous public hearing this evening. If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. If you're on a smartphone or a computer with a microphone, please click the raise hand button on the control bar of Zoom window. If you are listening by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. And we will accept any verbal comments at this time. And we're scheduled for the regular town board meeting portion at 7 p.m., but I would like to ensure that we have at least five minutes' opportunity for the public to comment, so we will give a little bit more time. With three other meetings to follow, I'm sure. And last time, we are in the midst of the second meeting this evening, the 2021 program here, the Community Development Block Grant program. And if anybody would like to comment publicly, please raise your hand. If you're on a smartphone or a computer with a microphone, please click the raise hand button on the control bar of the Zoom window. If you are listening by phone, you can also dial *9 to raise your hand. And we'll do another thirty seconds and then we'll close the public hearing. Okay, I'd like the record to reflect that we received no public comments on the 2021 Community Development Block Grant program. And without objection, I'd like to close the public hearing. So, second, on favor?
Hi.
I propose the public hearing is now closed, so thank you for that. You all set for the regular meeting? Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular town board meeting for the Town of Monroe for February 9th, 2021, and then ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Supervisor?
Here. And would everyone please rise for questions? Politically, the United States of America, and to be proud of which it stands, on nation, under God, in Israel, where we can trust this ground. Okay, thank you, everyone. First order of business is that, just for the record, we are operating under the most recent governor's executive order, which was issued on January 27th. And it is Executive Order 202.92. That essentially extends the ability for municipal to be compliant with the open meeting law through February 26th, 2021. And that's how we're able to do this meeting, as soon. Don, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
So you've heard that we closed the previous two meetings. They're both public hearings. We do have listed as item six on the agenda, RFPs for the Community Development Block Grant program for 2020. I don't think it's necessary that you have to stay on, but it's totally up to you. If you have nothing better to do this evening, you'd like to watch us do the people's business in the Town of Monroe, I'm okay with that as well.
I appreciate that. I'm traveling through the mountains, so we'll probably lose you anyway, so I'll duck out. Thank you for inviting me and have a great night.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate your time, Dan.
All right, Dan.
Thanks, Tom. All right, so item one on the agenda is approval of minutes. We actually have one, two, three, four sets. The first one, all from January 26th, 2021. The first one is the public hearing on the Monroe Mercury Squad contract. We also did a public hearing on the Southland Falls Fire Company contract. We had auto meeting that day and it was also a regular town board meeting. Any changes or comments on those minutes? No? If not, if someone would like to move them for adoption?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 26th, public hearing, Monroe Mercury Squad contract, January 26th, 2021, public hearing, Southland Falls Fire Company contract, January 26th, 2021, auto meetings, and January 26th, 2021, regular town board meeting.
Moved by Councilmember Nunes. Second by Councilmember Hogan. Any discussion? On favor? I propose they're approved unanimously. Item two I have is future meetings and workshops. I don't have any, at this time, any board members have any that they'd like to schedule. All right, item three, as has been customary for nearly a year, I'd like to provide a brief update on COVID-19. And at the state level, as of today, the seven-day average positivity rate has dropped to 4.38%. Number of patients that are currently hospitalized statewide is at 7,875. 1,412 patients are in the intensive care units with 971 of them intubated. And the statewide positivity rate is currently at 5.12%. Unfortunately, there's been 138 COVID deaths that occurred yesterday statewide. A little bit closer to home here in Seratoga County, there have been a total number of 11,109 confirmed cases. Number of deaths is at 132 for the county. Number of individuals that have recovered is currently 7,437. And presently, there's 49 individuals hospitalized as of today. Here in Town of Monroe, total number of confirmed cases presently stand at 491. Number of deaths is at 11. Presently, there's 202 active cases and the number of residents that have recovered is 278. At Village of Southland Falls, there's a total number of 134 confirmed cases. There have been zero deaths. There's presently 50 active cases and the number of residents that have recovered is at 84. The good news is that the seven-day rolling average positivity rate is, for Seratoga County, is at 3%. And total number of cases tested, total number of individuals tested in the county is at 314,214. The residents to date in isolation and quarantine, that number is now over 25,000, then 25,315. And presently, there are 3,807 individuals that are in quarantine. Just to put things in perspective, as chairman of board, I've made it my priority, the county's priority, to have Seratoga County be the first county in the state to get all of its residents vaccinated. As of yesterday, 26,371 individuals in the county, or 11.5%, have received at least one dose of the vaccine. And as a follow-up, another 10,805, or 4.7% of the county's residents, received the second dose. So we're slowly, you know, we're, our public health department has done a fantastic job. Most recently, public health has been working with BOCs to train the public health, the school nurses, to administer the vaccines to staff and employees. And most recently, they have, last week, down in Town Hall, which was very successful. So we're moving in that direction. The only living factor is vaccine availability. And if we can get access to the vaccine, we can get out the door in no time at all. So once the production ramps up, hopefully our numbers will start picking up at a greater pace. So, good news there. Item four on the agenda this evening is sale of 61 Hudson Street. And the board is aware, and has authorized me to work on board members' behalf. We came to an agreement for the sale of the old Town Hall at 61 Hudson Street. And the contract, the real estate contract, is in the amount of $159,000. And is the board to accept that figure? I think I already had authors in to sign the contract to sell. Agreed. So I just wanted to report that to the board. I guess we don't have to take any further action on that at this time.
Motion is, have the resolution of the board authorizing we sign the contract.
All right, that's fine. So I can't remember if we did it before or not, but if we did not, just to be sure, I didn't take a motion authorizing the supervisor to sign the contract for the sale of real estate, I'm sorry, real estate, for the sale of 59 through 61 Hudson Street with a sale price of $159,000. Also, second, any discussion? On favor? I propose portion period of the hearing. Item five, I listed as store district number one, extension five. This is a resolution. I think the clerk also has a copy of the verbiage. And this is basically the town engineer requesting that the town board authorize the town clerk to work in conjunction with our project engineer, which is the LaBerge Group, to set a bid opening date and advertise the Monroe Store District one, extension five, project for public bidding. And as part of that resolution, that the bid opening date shall be set and advertised only after review and legal approval of the contract documents by the term for the town. So this basically gives the clerk the authority to work with our project engineer and come up with that date and set up so that we can get these bid documents out. Motion approved. Second, any discussion? Favor? I propose motion carries unanimously. Do we need to do any more on that or we can now? Item six, this is the, as we announced earlier, conducted the public hearing on the community development block grant for the program year twenty twenty. We, we don't need a resolution on it, but I guess we can do it just for good measure. Basically saying that we'll do RFPs for allocation to that program. Should we do a resolution on that now? I know Carla provided one.
Yes.
All right. So I entertain a motion to request proposals for program year twenty twenty in the New York State CDPG grant administration and program delivery services. Be resolved that the town board authorize the preparation, communication of a request for proposals for program year twenty twenty for the NYSCDBG grant administration program delivery services and be further resolved that the supervisor is authorized to sign documents related to the RFP and be further resolved that the town clerk will take any and all administrative action to issue the RFP and collect responses thereto for review by the town board. Second, any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the annual Saratoga County recycling agreement. There's four different ownerships or cities in Saratoga County that several years ago was determined that the county would have shared sites for recycling services. The way the county set them up at that time was to strategically place them around the county. So no particular resident, any municipality had to go very far to do that. What, what we need to do is authorize supervisor to sign the intermunicipal agreement that the county has provided. And we received thirty five thousand dollars for that service. And we run it down here. We're very fortunate that town of Monroe is, is one of the municipalities that's selected because it's right here in our backyard versus having our residents go a little bit further. So my recommendation would be to authorize the supervisor to sign the intermunicipal agreement. It's the same that has been in the past. I know council has reviewed it. I think going forward, I'm going to get this added to the organizational meeting as one of those contracts that supervisor has already assigned at that time, just to speedrun the process.
Can I just put a question? On, on the top of page two, it says through December third first of twenty twenty two.
It's a two year contract. Okay. So typically, this is an annual contract. When it went through, I think it was Public Works Committee, a week or two ago, there was discussions on trying to like these regular reoccurring contracts instead of having the annual to give them for multi-years. And so they settled on a two year contract. So it'll be the same for both years. Thirty five thousand. Any discussion? All in favor? carries unanimously. Next item is the record of activities for New York State local retirement system. We do this for all elected officials. There was a time when you did not have to, we prefer to state retirement system, typical amount of time spent in your capacity as elected official. That changed several years ago and requires municipalities at every level to establish based on reporting from the elected official, their official record of activities. So we have to do that this evening for council member Van Tassel. And we have a resolution that's been prepared. Essentially, it says that be resolved at the town in Monroe and report the following days per month to New York State local employee retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by those officials to the clerk of the body. Council member Van Tassel has provided information to the clerk with the standard of workday being seven hours for the term eighteen twenty twenty through twelve thirty one twenty twenty one with the number of days slash ones based on record activities at four point seven five.
Actually, I made an error with that. The standard workday for council members is six hours. I should say six.
Six hours, I'm sorry.
I apologize. My mistake.
Everything else is the same?
Yes.
Okay. So somebody would like to move that? Second, any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Upstake. LaBerge's record reflect that council member Van Tassel is staying on both. Item nine, recreation department. We have a request from the regulator in relation to posting an advertisement for publication in the official newspapers for town in Monroe in relation to lifeguards and supervising lifeguards and seasonal park labors. Actually, I don't know, can need town board approval, but we can do it anyway. He's looking for an entity placed in the Chronicle only for a period of two weeks. The cost of running two column by two inch ad with a town was only sixty dollars per week. So he's looking for authority to spend a hundred and twenty. If after two weeks, there's not been significant response for ads and he will return to the board for to request additional advertising. I do have a question. Because we have designated two official newspapers, I don't think we can pick and choose, can we?
This isn't really official, now. This is never back.
Okay, so then we don't have to worry about that. So if somebody would like to move that. So, second, any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries unanimously. And item ten, I have listed as the server firewall licensing agreement. We, we have a quote, follow me back on that. So when we, we did the update to our server, it was a new server, right? These are the firewalls. It was done as part of a project at the end of twenty nineteen. Right. So when that project was conducted, the first year for licensing agreement was included in the cost of that service. And so now we have the option to renew licensing agreement for an additional year or at a reduced rate for three years. The one year renewal rate would be one thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars and eighty nine cents. If we were to go with option two, which is the three year renewal, the cost would be two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty cents. So you would recognize a significant savings if we did over three years versus one year. So my recommendation would be to go with the three year option. And this would be with, should be with Store Tech Queensberry in New York. And we currently have, this should come out of account sixteen twenty point four oh one, which currently has a balance of fifty thousand eighty three dollars and twenty seven cents as of January thirty first.
Just one piece of clarity. It's actually three firewalls, one for rec, one for hydrate, and then the main one here in town. So I guess.
Skip it over there.
That will price the power at all.
Yeah.
Each one for license, but the prices are the same.
So, second, any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Upstake. No extension on council member Van Tassel. Just a couple of supervisor items. I received an official letter from the United States Department of the Interior in relation to Grant's Cottage dated February twenty twenty one. This is from Sherwood for your chief, the National Registered Historic Places, the National Historic Landmarks Program. Says greetings and I'm pleased to inform you that the Secretary of the Interior on January thirteenth twenty twenty one designated the Grant Cottage in Wellton, New York, a national historic landmark in recognition of the property's national significance in the history of the United States. The Historic Science Act, Act of nineteen thirty five authorized the Secretary of the Interior to define and recognize nationally significant places that best represent the American experience. Landmark designation recognizes and encourages the preservation of places that have exceptional value for commemorating or illustrating the history of the United States for the inspiration and benefit of all. Secretary designate National Historic Landmarks only after careful study by the National Park Service. Extensive opportunities for public involvement and review and recommendations of the National Park System Advisory Board in accordance with the National Historic Landmark Criteria set forth in thirty six Code of Federal Regulations, Part sixty five. National Historic Landmarks are listed in National Registered Historic Places, making them eligible for safeguards and benefits provided by the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty six and other federal laws protecting historic properties. We are delighted to enroll the Grant Cottage as a National Historic Landmark designation that reflects the mission of this property as an irrepressible part of our nation's heritage. So this is actually fantastic news as the board is aware. Town of Monroe and the town of Monroe have consistently financially supported Grant's Cottage, which is located in the town of Monroe. And it's, it's been a challenge to meet the needs of the cottage, which was where President Grant spent his final seven weeks writing his memoirs. And there's a lot of upkeep that needs to be done to keep that site presentable to the public. I had a good fortune with meeting there a couple of years ago with Senator Schumer. At that time, he announced that he was working for this designation. I know that Congressman Stefanic was also been involved in it. And it was a joint effort on everybody's part. Fantastic news is because of this designation, we'll open up that, so, and that's just fantastic. So, yeah, that's just great. So that's, that's awesome. Just want to give a shout out on Monroe Emergency Squad for their help on Saturday, January thirtieth. The county had received a limited supply of COVID vaccine that per the governor's Department of Health directive could only be used for seniors. Wasn't allowed, it was like three hundred building wide. And the determination on the part of county public health and board supervisors that we would use that, a majority of that to vaccinate seniors seventy five and older who could not get out of their homes. And so the economy worked for that as a Monroe Emergency Squad. They took care of twenty eight of our residents in town of Monroe, town of Northland that otherwise would not have been able to receive those vaccinations. So just wanted to shout out to them, the work that they do in protecting public health and safety and partner the county, public health department. Just an update, as the board knows, we're in the process of purchasing additional, almost fifty acres contiguous land to Monroe Rec. And prior to moving forward with that, the board authorized a survey to take place. I received a vacation. I think it was here yesterday. That field work has begun and they expect to have it completed by late next week. And they'll have a map available, some map for that. So hopefully there'll be no more delay on that. We can move forward with closing that map. And that's all I have for supervisor items. Committee reports, any committee?
It was an issue with the generator earlier this year. There was a lot going on, both that is for service, well, services if they discovered the black. This.
Is that where the block?
I don't know. I don't think so. I think it's a plugin, but I think there's not one out there.
Okay. Cause it comes out on Mac, right? So it's trying to crank, trying to crank this kind of weather.
Yes, difficult.
Yeah.
It's starting to prepare.
Good.
A couple of the fossils in here, the back, this room and back here for the corridor. Apparently they've never had hot water or historically had had water in the faucets. Peter's government, he replaced one of the faucets with one that I found in the basement. That seems to be working. And the other one, he was able to adjust it to get hot water. Oh, thinking about recreation and the park, we're moving off of, I mean, your recreation park. Apparently, calls about availability. We need to be thinking about how to handle that this year. Knowing that the numbers are coming up, I'd like to see, play the videos. That's all I have for you now. There's plenty of things that they've been working on, but those were a couple of things I thought.
Good. Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Not sure if it falls in our committee report, Jim, to talk about it, but I didn't know we have made any further steps to take a look at that I and M Village and the Water Agreement. That's overdue. At this point, we have to work at getting that up to date for next, going forward, I guess. That would be in Mr. Fantastin.
So why don't you start by looking to see if we receive payment?
Okay.
As part of the agreement initially.
Okay.
And then we can go over there.
Sounds good. Get back to that. Mr. Fantastin, we're talking about the meeting that Ms. Bittner and Pace University, I started.
It was a good session with my sir. They were actually quite appreciative of us being willing to work with them. They continue to work with other entities throughout the state. They share some additional perspectives that we can think of. Carla's in the process of putting into a document and share with the entire board. This is on the draft schedule. They had some recommendations that we'll be bringing back to the board for consideration. Case study, they'll be back as well, which she started here for their boards. They were actually impressed. I think it'd be a fair statement. They thought we had done a good job to that point where we're wrapped now. And the only recommendation they had was for us to work harder, keeping it simple because in there, we have a lot of things that tended to overlap with the existing code, whether they be zoning or other codes of the town. So those are valid points to make it more manageable. So we're interested to see their summary document and then bring it back to the entire board. It'll help us through the process.
Yeah, I received, I did talk with Carla on that, who gave the update on the meeting with. And, you know, it's, it's one of the things, things I was very impressed with is that New York State Energy Research Development Authority is actually honing in what we're doing here in the town of Monroe to be the benchmark to be used statewide. So I thought that was an indication of how much time and effort and, you know, the direction. So I thought that was an indication of how much time and effort and the direction we're going. And so great news and there'll be more conversations on that. And I think Carla provided an update to the board earlier this afternoon. I didn't have to read it.
Email that.
Yeah, so that should be.
Some email. You know, maybe just read it. I didn't make today.
We ended up they received some feedback from planning and planning board members. I'm not interested in the zoning board, but.
That person's on there for planning. I guess planning is very busy, so I don't expect.
Yeah.
I assume it's all known.
Yeah, yeah. And the important thing is it'll be the planning board that will be providing the most input anyway. We're using, so we'll look forward to that. Any other committee reports?
I don't think they reported this, but I was, I was thinking, you were talking about deepening up the building department as far as the bonus factors and the costs certainly be a consideration. You know, as far as, probably it's only for the time. And I want to ask you, I haven't mentioned Clifton Park. I got on the live and it blew me by a little bit as well. I was wondering if the board could maybe set up a committee to look at whether to take the raise our fees, you guys to beef up our budget. So potentially look forward, maybe look at the, because things, you know, our town is just, it's just, the most number of houses going out on the planning board. Like Milton said, it's all crazy, so much stuff going on. We're going to have to work on that. We're going to have folks over there to, I'd rather see us get a big dog, get ready, maybe pro back there. So I'd be willing to be on that, maybe somebody else want to turn, maybe get some numbers and increase some numbers, you know, work with the zoning department and get great stuff and see, you know, what we have to do together, we have to be, so hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, very good points. It's something that, you know, we've, we want to take a look at for some time. There's two ways we can do it. We can, you know, either have a subcommittee forum to start working or we can collectively all work on and do workouts.
That'd be great.
Whenever anybody comes to us.
I'll move our email. I think we received an informal submission from one of our planning. I think it was maybe about a year ago about this exact thing. That our fees were too low and I think she may have presented to you the value about it. So we might get somewhere, just someone who has that knowledge and where we could be. We might be in our emails right now. So I'll take a look back through and see what I have.
All right, we'll get to that. I'll take you around the board then when we.
Not sure. So if I find it.
Yeah, so I think that everybody drinks some bad. If anybody wants to reach out to, you know, some select municipalities that are in line with us. I mean, we're fifth or sixth largest town in the county. So let me look at that. Milton, Clifton Park, Half Moon, Malta, you know, any of those.
I usually say Clifton Park's off. I was.
They, of course, they have that staff around too. But you know, our building department used to have a building inspector and a building inspector. And we have not that position filled for a while. We did have a part-time code enforcement offer that we brought. We, you know, haven't received any interest in that position. But you know, one of the ways we can look to bring in another full-time assistant building inspector, which I think is needed, which will help with code enforcement and cover for, you know, the building inspector, is to come up with ways, creative ways where that department can fund its way. So all for it. And anything else on committee rules? If not, I don't need an executive session. Is there any other business?
I have two things. Where are we with the area of the ditch?
I'm sorry.
The area, the Russell Call.
Yeah. There's a court date, right? With the article sevens of the period?
I don't, I didn't ask.
I think it's summer, in the summer.
I think the courts are messing up, maybe.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
But I can have, I don't have a, you know.
Okay, great. That'd be great. And one other thing I have is when the fire departments here, they were going to give you more information about why they need to go upfront instead of that. Is they get back to you on anything?
I haven't received any.
Okay.
And quite frankly, I have the contract prepared, ready to make the first payment and they want to sign it, but there's been no communication. So I don't know if anybody wants to.
I'm the fire company liaison and I can reach out to Greg Addy and see where they're at.
Okay.
I think I've been gathering all the framework of the three thirds of the front end. I think we should, if we can, help them out. But I'd like to see what the issues are.
Yeah, good.
I'm going to say back when we did the budget, like I think it was my first year that they came in and they were asking for that upfront payment. And it was because they actually used the money and invested it to be able to do more things. They didn't indicate that they were having those payments right upfront that scheduled throughout the year, but they were hoping to use the money upfront to invest it. We were talking.
Yeah, the balls in their court that they just lost that contract, we're ready to go with that.
They sent me around the back.
Yes. All right. Any other business? Not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, on favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Mel.
Good to see you. Nice to see you guys.